Good evening and welcome to Sanford City Council Meeting for Tuesday, November 18th, 2025. We're sorry we're late this evening. This meeting will be conducted in person in the Sanford City Council chambers and via remote video and teleconference pursuant to one MRSA Section 403B, 2D, and Section 6 of the Sanford City Council Rules of Procedure. Members of the public may join the meeting by phone and by following the link on our website for this meeting. Members of the public may also submit comments via the City of Sanford website at www.sanfordmayor.org. Under Government, City Council, contact the council. Could we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to now have a moment of silence. Thank you. We have a small group this evening. Joining me this evening, Council Hanselman.
Here.
Council Hitchcock.
Yes, I am here.
President.
Council Martel.
Present.
And Council Stackpole, Council Tranchmontang, and the Mayor Becky Brink are all absent with notice this evening. The minutes for, oh, and joining me, our City Manager Steve Buck and his assistant, Larissa Rickett. I'm sorry. I was going to say Sherri Lord again. Don't even. Okay. Minutes 25-386-01. Order to approve the minutes from the regular City Council held on November 5th, 2025.
So moved, Madam Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. And I would second that.
Thank you. All those in favor? You should know this evening, we're quorum, but there have to be four votes for everything or it doesn't fail, it fails and we'll move it to the next meeting, just in case. Mayor's report and City Council Subcommittee reports. We had one Subcommittee last week due to the holiday. I just want to mention where most of, most of the stuff is on today, tonight's agenda from that master Subcommittee that we had last week. We are having Thursday from 6:00 to 8:00 in this room, a meeting with the Maine Department of Transportation regarding the RACE grant. You might hear more about it this evening. So at that meeting we had last Wednesday, we discussed the future of the aesthetic improvements, which is part and parcel of the conversations we need to have as we're finalizing the plans for Main Street, for around Number One Pond, for Cottage Street, and for the Park and Ride. If you are interested in any of these areas of the community, and I encourage people to please attend, there'll be new pretty pictures on the wall, and they'll have a conversation about decisions they've made as they've been doing the design and development of this project. Please come and join us Thursday night here in this room, third floor, City Hall Annex, from 6:00 to 8:00. City Managers Report.
Thank you. Very short tonight because everything's on the agenda for us this evening. Fire Station Headquarters, the bid opening is this coming Thursday, November 20th. The bid opening will be held at WBRC in Portland, Maine at 2:00, 2:00 PM in the afternoon. We still have 12 qualified GCs, general contractors, that are still in the bid process. One dropped out, so we got rid of 13. We know 13's unlucky, right? So 12 is good. So 12 qualified bidders are still in the bid process. We'll see how many stay in when we open on Thursday. We scheduled a half hour for the bid openings. The contractors will be allowed to zoom into that, and then after that fact, we will sit, the city administration will sit, councils have the opportunity to zoom in for that, and we'll start the review process in preparation for the December 2nd council meeting. So we'll be working on doing the full review for complacency technically, technically complete, looking at the bid amounts and any contingencies that they have, and then work forward a recommendation to the City Council for the December 2nd meeting to have that accepted hopefully, and move towards construction, provided that we're inside our budgeted amounts. So I won't talk to you about the RACE grant because Deputy Mayor already did, but again, there's a public hearing, or public, there's a public hearing here, this coming, you know, public meeting this Thursday night.
Public hearing would have required better notification.
Okay. All right. So we'll go over the RACE grant, which will soon be called the Build Grant, because we have to change name on everything. As long as the funding's secure, they can call it whatever they want. We're good. So.
But I think we should constantly be making the distinction of people, until people have moved over to the new language.
Okay. You change every day, right?
I want to confuse the public. I don't want to.
Today's raised, tomorrow's billed. All right. The last thing, and then I'll stop talking. The Legislative Summit is going to be held. This is our third time of holding a Legislative Summit for all York County legislators, state legislators, and the local elected officials from York County have been invited to this as well. It's a summit on homelessness. We've talked about the need for working with the state cooperatively towards more funding towards homeless shelters and other aspects related to homelessness. In the past, this year, we're taking a slightly different tack in that we will start out with a presentation on the continuum of housing, because we feel that we can talk about a lot of success stories there, what's been done, what the state has put in for resources, how those resources have been used, and what the results are from that. The next major area of topics will be general assistance. There used to be, general assistance was a program of last resort. It's now become a program of first resort, and we would look at the last five-year period, we look at the extreme increase in caseload, the increased age of the applicants that are coming in, applying and qualifying for assistance, and the fact that 90% of all general assistance has been put out there has been towards just housing, nothing else, just housing. So it's become a housing program. So we're asking the state to recognize those aspects about the changes in general assistance and work with the state legislators, give them this knowledge, because there were, there were close to 30 bills in the long session last year, all looking for some level of change towards general assistance. A small handful of those got passed that really had no fiscal positive impact for us here as a municipality, and we're still asking for some of those changes. So it's our opportunity to talk to our York County delegation about that. And then the third part, we've recognized that there is a portion of the chronically unhoused people that remain chronically unhoused because of substance use disorder and severe mental illness, so SUD and SMI. We're going to talk to our legislators about a specific, we're going to use a specific case example that we studied here recently and established a drug overdose task force from that, for which we've had a good response. So we're going to talk to them about this category of people, because it's a recidivism aspect. The people come back and come back and come back and come back. They remain unhoused because of their, their mental health capacity and/or their substance use disorder, their inability to make a decision to accept resources is preventing them from becoming housed. So we're going to talk to our legislators about that. In doing this research and our communications coordinator is putting all of this together, there was a tremendous amount of information that we uncovered. There has been significant state resources put into increasing mental health beds, detox beds and such and that, that aren't all up and going yet. The York County facility that's being built to replace the former Lehman's Way, I think it's approximately a 40-bed facility. It's not yet online. It will make a tremendous difference once it does come online, but we're going to talk to the state for the several hundreds of millions of dollars that have been put into this, why we're not seeing adequate results at this point in time, and work with our legislators to find, find common solutions there. So it should be a very good evening. Last year, we crammed in too much information. We did all of the municipal side of the equation on the present, presentation of homelessness, wished them quickly over to the school board, and this, they did a whole presentation on EPS and unhoused students and such. It was a long evening. It was too much information, so we've broken that down and staying just on the municipal side of the equation for this year. So that will be on December 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buck. Okay, Communications and Presentations, 25-371-01, the Quarterly Report and Presentation from the Director of Economic Development. I think he has some interesting stuff for us this evening.
I appreciate you setting the bar so high. We can live up to it.
Two of the agenda items connect to you as well, so.
Yeah. So it's that time again. My name's Keith McBride. I'm the Director of your Growth Council. We do this every quarter, and this has been a very interesting and eventful quarter. A lot of what's taken place, especially at the larger macroeconomic level, is going to impact a lot of the information that I, that I'm able to share today. So with regard to macroeconomic trends, and these definitely have a direct local impact. In November 1st of every year, the Maine Consensus Economic Forecasting Commission releases their annual update to their forecast, and the key word in their report this year was uncertainty. They used it an awful lot. They used it to reference fiscal uncertainty, geopolitical uncertainty, and economic uncertainty. They pointed out that austerity action at the federal level threatens funding to Medicaid and the Affordable Care Act, and the direct impact that that might have on Maine residents and the Maine economy, where particularly we're dependent in Maine on healthcare as one of our largest employers. They also point out the potential impacts of inflation, which remains above the target levels that the Fed likes to see. They typically shoot for about 2%. We're, we stay at about 3%, kind of holding strong there. So just a touch above where we typically want to see those indicators. And pointing out that tariffs continue to threaten Maine's trade relationship with Canada, and that being a big concern. So these are things that have a direct impact in Maine, and of course, especially as it relates to some of the main businesses who are engaged in export business. The other interesting thing that I noticed that was a theme for this quarter and a lot of the economic reporting was potential weakening in the labor market. So tracking jobs in labor this quarter has been particularly difficult because Bureau of Labor Statistics and other government sources for data have not updated during the government shutdown, but I was able to find that, well, it's not like I found it myself, but a lot of the economists are relying on private sources for some of the reporting data. So there's a company called Challenger, they were track, they every year track announced layoffs and job cuts, and they had a report that came out this quarter. Through October 25th, they were able to track over 1 million planned layoffs nationwide compared to only 760,000, give or take, in all of 2024. So that's notable that that number is up. Those are the highest since 2020, when they were almost double that for the year because of COVID layoffs. What's really interesting about that, though, and I think how it comes back to a more local impact, is that over 50%, over half of all of the layoffs that have been announced in 2025 come out of two particular sectors. The first one is technology, where AI is increasingly replacing a lot of the technological jobs, and those businesses are continuing to integrate AI for the cost-saving purposes, and warehousing, where we're seeing increased automation and robotics. This leads to a lot of issues. We're seeing the increased impact of AI. That's one of the other themes we're seeing in a lot of economic reporting. What is, what is it going to do to the economy? It's becoming increasingly utilized. How is that going to change the job market? How is it going to change the economy? We're starting to see those impacts now in the labor market. It also has impacted the labor market for new entrance into the market. The, those jobs are replacing those entry-level positions. AI, I should say, is replacing entry-level positions. Automation is replacing entry-level positions. So there was another report that showed that this year is the hardest employment situation for a college graduate to walk into since 2014, when we were just emerging from recession. The unemployment overall remains very low, and I know there's a dashboard that we submitted that shows that that unemployment level is still pretty stable and stays pretty low, not just here in Sanford and in Maine, but also nationwide. But unemployment for the college graduate level is at its absolute highest point since 2014. So I think that's another way of tracking the potential impact of the automation and AI and the impact it's having on, on economics. At the same time, those businesses are cost-saving, so for a lot of businesses that are, that are turning to those measures, they're becoming more profitable. We have to look at it on both sides of it as well. So those are some things that are happening that I think are having an impact both nationally and to businesses. This is the graph that I took from that Challenger report that shows those planned job cuts. Now, this is monthly, going back for at least a couple of years, and you can see, this is post-COVID, but you can see the spikes that have happened in 2025 that have, are definitely higher up over they've been in the past years. And again, most, more than half of those cuts are all out of transportation and, or excuse me, warehousing and technology. Let's turn to happier things. The Growth Council, we've been very busy. As the council will recall, we've kind of organized our activities into these five core competencies, and we've had a lot of activity in all of these. So first of all, for marketing, our approach to this has been sort of twofold, one of them being an external direct marketing campaign to target businesses that are, we want to be interested in coming to Sanford, who we think would be very successful in Sanford, and for whom we have the types of assets, whether that's available property or a workforce that's skilled and ready, and some other things, whatever those particular industries are that make it an advantageous place for them to consider. We want to reach out to them and put that information right under their nose and say, here's a community that you ought to want to be a part of, and here's why. So that's one piece of our marketing strategy. The other one is a more internally-based one, changing some of the messaging, talking about the great things that are happening here, putting it out that there's something really special happening in Sanford and creating that buzz. We've made great progress on both of those. We've utilized a lot of the information that came out of the market study and Economic Development Action Plan work by RKG, which was funded as a part of a kickoff for the city's comprehensive plan update. We're getting a lot of value out of that information. So we're very appreciative that the, that the city was able to fund that and get that work done. We're using it on a pretty regular basis, especially to help guide some of these marketing efforts. So more on that in the future as we start to launch some of those, and we're going to be tracking metrics, making sure that what we're doing is working, getting us the type of results we want, and if it's not, we're going to figure out how to tweak it, revise it, put a new plan into action, and get better results the following year. Visitation and outreach, this is our, part of our business retention strategy, is to be in touch with local businesses, to talk to them, understand what they're doing, the success stories and the struggles that some of them are having, see what we can do to help. We had a wonderful visit with Wood and Sons off of New Dam Road. They are expanding. They're doing great things, and I never thought I would be interested at all in how wood pellets are made, but it was absolutely fascinating. A lot of the technology they're using is extraordinarily cool, and it's a very involved process, and the end product is a very high-end product. Tony's very proud of what they're putting out. It's a Sanford, Maine-made Sanford product. It's going all over the place, and people are very, very interested in buying it. They're using extraordinarily high-quality wood specifically for that purpose. So we're very proud of what Tony's done up there and excited that he's planning on expanding their operations. And lastly, I'll mention Brownfield. So as you know, we have a cleanup project that is moving forward for the boiler house at the International Woolen Mill. One of the steps in that process is to get a, what's called a Section 106 review at the State Historic Preservation Office. We made an application for them to do that. We're providing them with some information on the building. We've got great participation from the Sanford-Springvale Historical Society, who we had an opportunity to tour the building with so that they could take a look at the condition and basically confirm that there's not really much of any historical value there to preserve. The building itself is unfortunately a tattered shell of what it might have once been, and really, it's just a danger at this point that needs to be taken down. And the proposed cleanup plan with a cap and cover system is the most environmentally safe and efficient way to do that, and they are in agreement with that, and said the same to the State Historic Preservation Office. So we're very grateful to them for taking part in that and making that process a little bit more clear. We're also working on, on the other side of our Brownfields program is the assessment funds. We're utilizing our assessment funds to participate in projects like the Stenton Mill redevelopment, which I know we're going to talk about a little bit later on the agenda tonight, and also looking at the, the Notre Dame Cathedral, the potential future Springvale Fire Station site, to take a look at the potential for any hazardous building materials that might be on that site.
I can't believe you made it a cathedral. Like, it's a cathedral.
Did I? Is it not? No.
No. Bishops are in cathedrals.
You know, there is a Notre Dame cathedral someplace in my life that I had been to.
Paris.
Yeah, not that one. I've never been to Paris.
Thank you for, for upping the game here.
Yeah, sorry. You know, now unfortunately, it is what it is. But we did actually have a chance to tour that site as well. So, and I have to say, it's a, you know, it does feel very, does feel very religious. Yeah.
Not the level of Paris.
No, not the level of Paris, although that one was on fire not too long ago. So, so that's our Brownfields program. Things are really moving forward with that, and now that we have our EPA rep back in the office, and we had our first follow-up meeting with them to make sure things are progressing, and there's a couple of other projects that I think we'll be utilizing assessment funds to help move along, but more on that a little bit later. Lastly, just to update you on a couple of local economic development projects. The redevelopment of Jagger Mill in Springvale is moving forward. They are framing out units in the building. It's very exciting. There's been a ton of work on that site, and they're still proposing leasing to begin sometime in 2026. So a lot of work's been going on. They're very excited to see that move forward. On Eagle Drive, we know that the property acquired by the IDC from Polyvantis, formerly Rome, was granted subdivision approval. They've been looking at those lots. They have a purchase and sale agreement for the first two of those lots, which we're very hopeful will go to closing soon. There is a lot of interest in the remaining lots. They completed a sewer line extension along Eagle Drive that will serve each of those lots. Very important to have those types of utilities in place. Very important to have those types of utilities in place to say that they are development-ready, shovel-ready, can move in, hook up your utilities, build your building, and go. So that's a huge bonus and boon to that. I put Wooden Suns on here anyway, even though I covered them in the previous, previous slide. And lastly, just the restaurant activity we've seen in town has been remarkable over the last year. Everybody's been excited to see Green Tea reopened. We've had a new restaurant in the Main Street Marketplace called Rialto. Addys has opened up a brick-and-mortar location in Springvale. We have the Smash Burger, which I know the Chamber of Commerce had a nice ribbon cutting there a month ago, maybe a little more. And I think we've had a chance to talk about that in the past, and the Azul Agave Mexican Restaurant here in the downtown area. And there are more to come. We're still working with other ones, too, that are looking at locations. So we expect more restaurant openings, which always gets people excited when there's new food to eat in town. So happy to come back and tell you more about those as they're, as they're ready to be announced. But I hope to keep this brief. I hope I succeeded, but I'm glad to answer any questions that you might have or anything else you'd like me to touch on while I'm here.
Are there any questions anybody has? From our small, little group here? We did get a chance to talk to you prior to this meeting, so I think we're good. Any questions from the audience? Okay, seeing none, thank you for the information.
Thank you.
Next up, 25388-01, the presentation on winter preparedness and operations from our Director of Public Works, Matt Hill.
Thank you very much. Matt Hill, Director of Public Works. I'm here at your request to go over our operations this coming winter. We have, thanks to several recent hires, all of our prime pile positions full. I know that was a goal for the council, and we've made it. So we still have one mechanic who's coming in this Monday, then our garage will be full. And then one of those mechanics that went to the garage was a lateral from the transfer station, which opened up a vacancy at the transfer station. We have a promising interview on Thursday for that position. So it's very likely, I think, that we'll, we'll be able to be fully staffed. So, and notably, four of the hires this year are employees with prior public works experience. So they, they left, and the grass is not green on the other side, and they're back. So what Keith was just talking about there with the economy, that's maybe perhaps a sign of the economy, too, that these jobs are now seen as a little bit more secure, and that security is appealing. We've been working on our frontline winter fleet vehicles. Plowswings, salters, and wetting systems have been serviced. Annual facility maintenance is underway. We do have several facility repairs that remain elusive for repair. Roof leaks are creating unsafe working conditions. Lack of secure gutter purchase on our metal roofs, there's nowhere to really, like, responsibly hang the gutters from. So it's like, kind of like a metal on a thin metal roof that is prone to tearing off with heavy snow loads. So those are constantly tearing themselves off the top of the roof. The bay doors, the garage was, was built back in the 60s, so the, the doors are too narrow, and they're not, they don't really accommodate the modern plow truck very well. So after 16 hours of plowing, coming in, having, you know, an inch of clearance on either side of the door is, is tough for, for the drivers. And then we'll continue to repair the furnaces as necessary. We held a pre-plow meeting. We held annually, and we've reviewed all aspects of winter storm response, talked to our contractors, updated and circulated our emergency contacts list. Our garage maintenance supervisor conducts inspection on all of our equipment plus contractors' equipment, and then we check in with all our, our partners and stakeholders on any of their changes, their specific needs, or updated statuses. As always, we do have a priority of roadways that are defined by the main DOT map viewer in order as arterials, which you can think of as the primary, like, lifeblood of the city, major collectors and minor collectors, local roads in that order. So you can think of, if you're in, it's an emergency, you need to get from one side of the city to the other, say, from the police station to a, you know, emergency, or from a house to the hospital, you're better, your chances are best if that arterial is open. So after those emergency locations, we also go after public services and institutions such as schools, City Hall, quasi-municipal utilities, post office, et cetera. We have 184 miles of streets and roads. We have 14 primary routes that are illustrated here on the screen for you. I'm prepared to kind of use our GIS if necessary to zoom in on any one of those routes if necessary. We're maintaining those with 10-wheel plow trucks, wings and salters, six-wheel trucks, wings and salters, 550s with wings and salters, then front-end loaders with wings. We also have the two contracted assignment regions, which is basically the green, which is on the east side, and the maroon, or, you know, pink-purple on the west side. So both those contracts are, are staffed by Plant and Suns, who's been doing a great job for us. Our three late-moder holder sidewalk plow tractors are now all back in service, and many of you, we received a lot of favorable comments last year that we were getting to sidewalks a lot faster. We have a younger guy hired as a light-duty truck operator, and he loves the sidewalk tractor. So we are very happy to get him out there, and he, he's doing a great job. So we're very, very glad to have him, and it's helping out our response time as well. We do have a lot of questions annually about which sidewalks are plowed and which aren't. We are not able to plow all the sidewalks we have because we have a lot of sidewalks. We do have this GIS layer, though, shown on screen, that we do routinely plow. But any changes to that, we, you know, typically go through the city manager and city council for additions or subtractions. So the municipal parking lots, so the Midtown Marketplace, so I've, I've got some dots on the map here. The Midtown Marketplace, we, there's no overnight parking, so those top and bottom lots are, let me, let me clarify, there's no overnight public parking. The lower Midtown Mall is a, is a private agreement that we have with the adjacent residential, you know, they, they do have some overnight parking there, but it's not overnight public parking. The overnight public parking is in the Benton Playground Parking Lot and the Heritage Crossing Parking Lot. And then we also have other parking lots at, it's not Backstreet Grill anymore. He just said Azul. What's that? The mech, thank you. And some, some public parking lot, notably for City Hall and the police station, which we do maintain through our contractor. We also have the hydrants are cleared by the fire department's contractor. Reminder to avoid placing snow near or on hydrants, sidewalks, and into the street. Even transporting that snow across the street is a no-no, because when you do, oftentimes with a large amount of snow, you end up leaving some of it in the road, which is then becomes a hazard and danger for others. So all hydrants also have that reflective marker to identify if they become buried. It was, geez, about eight years ago now, but we had a three-foot storm, and we found five of those hydrants the hard way. So after that, we came to an agreement with the water district that all the hydrants would now have the tall reflective markers sticking out from the top. So snow removal operations, when there's nowhere left to push the snow, we have to come in and physically remove it in our most urban areas. We have a loader-mounted snow blower, which loads snow into the truck. But in order to do that, we have to basically demount all the equipment from our fleet. So the plows, the wings, and the sanders have to come out of those trucks so that they can haul snow. And it should be noted that it takes us about a day to strip down the trucks. So if we don't have a forecast where we've got at least five or six days of clear, no-storm activity, we're generally not going to strip down the trucks just to put them all back on a day later, because there's no, there's no opportunity to get the truck stripped down, you know, work our tails off, and then 24 hours later, build the trucks back up. So you're going to see sometimes that there's a lot of snow built up downtown, and people are saying, well, why don't we remove it? Well, oftentimes, we get into that two- or three-day cycle where we're having that event every two or three days. There's no opportunity to strip down the trucks and build them back up again, so. We do take that snow over to our main DEP permitted snow dump by the YMCA. We are actively seeking, as a cooperative effort between the city, main DEP, and the water district, alternatives, because that snow dump is adjacent to a significant wetland and in a wellhead protection zone. So, and then also, the removal takes place overnight to avoid traffic issues. And that's also a complication of, why don't we, you know, sneak in there for two days and remove snow? Because we're going to, working days, night-to-day, to night-to-day is very difficult on the crew for anybody, really, to go flip-flop your schedule. So winter parking bans, reminder, snow ban violation ticket is typically $50, but escalates with severity. We had a lot of violations last year, particularly for that first storm. We had about 100 violations. This year, we had that pre-plow meeting, and in coordination with the police department, we talked about the police, setting the parking ban a couple hours before the storm starts and giving the police an opportunity to knock on doors, ticket, and tow if necessary, even before the storm starts, so that we really get people into compliance. Generally, we've found if we, if we come in and hit them hard, that they stop doing it. But if we, if we don't get the word out there and people get into the habit of parking on the street, not only can't we do our job, but then we also get the complaints afterwards saying, like, my, my street wasn't plowed. Well, if we don't have the ability to get down your street, we're, we're not going to come down and scratch your car and plow the street. So just a word of caution there. So currently, our department's salaries are about 5% under budget. This presentation was put together a couple of weeks ago, but I think it's still pretty close. Our overtime budget is currently 21% under. Salt prices are up 7.5% this year to $83.40 a ton. The equipment repairs are slightly under budget. Again, we're about to hit our busiest season, and we continue to balance sending out garage work versus performing the work in-house as we become more fully staffed in the garage once again. With that, I'll be happy to, I'd be happy to take questions.
Are there any questions, Councilor Hanselman?
And I apologize because I was looking at this while you were speaking, so I hope I didn't miss you say it. But with the GIS layer for sidewalk snow clearing, can you, is there a differentiation in terms of priority for the blue, green, and orange?
Sorry, is that?
Sorry, is the, are the blue, green, and orange sidewalk clearing colors indicative of priority or just areas?
There are three routes. We've got three tractors, three routes.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was looking at that, too. I didn't even know we had it as a layer. That was kind of, that was interesting and fun to look at, yeah. My question, how are we a number of notifications for people for parking bans? Do we have a high number of people who actually get the text messages, et cetera?
Yeah, that's a great point. So if you go on the city's website, you can click for automated notifications that get sent right to your phone for parking ban alerts. I would encourage anybody to go, go on there and sign up for them. I would have to ask the Information Services Department about how many actual subscriptions we have to that. We did have some complaints last year, and notably, you know, there were, like, guests from out of town. So they were upset that, one person in particular was upset that we didn't, you know, go out and physically place, like, signs in the snowbank saying parking ban tonight. Well, you know, that, that's going to be difficult. The snowbank won't be there for very long, and then, you know, our crew's going to have to do that in the daytime when they're supposed to be sleeping. So it, yeah, it's, it's a tough prospect any way you cut it.
The only, one main reason is when I'm notifying my tenants about it, I say, sign up, sign up, sign up. I'm not telling them all summer, all winter, that there's parking ban. And they seem to do fairly well with remembering. But I'm wondering if there are ways that, you know, communications could maybe put something out as we're getting close, and maybe, I don't know if the police department could have very simple handmade links, cards that they hand to people, especially, you know, hey, sign up for the notification, sign up for the notification, something simple that we could print in-house. I didn't know if that would work, to get more and more people on board with that, so. Because it would help and save them a lot of time in the, in the long run.
Yeah, I real, like, for me, when I, you know, I'm signed up, you know, for that text message notification, that's, that's a very good reminder that you get well in advance.
Exactly, and that's why the more people we can have do it, the more time we save with the people notifying them. The other thing, first of all, the breakdown part was very interesting, how long it takes you to break down before you can pick up on the streets. I didn't really factor that in, but that was excellent. I'm glad I can throw that out to people when they ask me that question.
Yeah, I made this presentation to our, our department's staff, and I said I need feedback, and that was their biggest thing, and they said, you need to clarify exactly why we don't do that.
Well, tell them they definitely win on that one, because it was a good piece of information.
They're on the ball. We had, we had a group meeting, as we've become fully staffed, we had a group meeting the other day, and it was, like, our, our little break room was elbow to elbow. So it was a good feeling.
Oh, good. Nice. That's good to hear. Any other questions? Thank you. Very informative. I appreciate that. I don't think there was anybody signed up for public participation when I walked by. There's nobody, nobody new has walked in, so. So, public hearings, that's what some people are here for. 25-365-01, a public hearing to receive comments in favor or against the new liquor license application with malt, spiritus, and venus privileges submitted by Green Tea ZXF, doing business as Green Tea, 1005 Main Street, Sanford, Maine. I know this is a restaurant that very, many people are excited to see reopen. I am opening the public hearing. Are there any, is there anybody speak in favor? Tell someone about your restaurant. I'm assuming you guys are here for Green Tea. It's a great opportunity. No? It's fine. Okay. They are here, excited to, to, to be here for the meeting, so that people know. Is there anybody speak against? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. 25-372-01, a public hearing to receive public comment on the East Side Neighborhood Revitalization Municipal Tax Increment Financing and Development District. The district is 32.07 acres, more specifically identified on the East Side Neighborhood map attached here, too. This also includes the development of 150 units of market-rate housing in the Stenton Trust Building, map lot J29-18, and authorizes the city manager to enter into a credit enhancement agreement with the developer. So who is going to give a little lowdown on this one? Keith McBride from the Economic Growth Council.
I don't, I don't know if it's appropriate during the public hearing, but I would ask when we get to the new business that we take these items a little bit out of order, because it would make more sense to do the amendment to the eighth, the Eighth Amendment to the downtown district before we approve the TIF, but I'm glad to speak to them in either order. Sure.
So the second item on the public hearing, he's going to speak on both of them, then people can comment. 25-378-01, a public hearing to receive public comment on the Eighth Amendment, the downtown omnibus municipal tax increment financing district to remove a parcel, specifically city map J29-18, that will become a Stenton Trust mill project and part of a new TIF district. These are both items that are together. It's essentially the same conversation. So go ahead.
And if we can kind of talk about them both in one public hearing, I guess, then we'll, we'll do that. So I, I will start with the, oh, Larissa told me not to do that.
So first, we're going to pull the Stenton Trust out, and then we're going to redefine the district.
Exactly.
There you go.
So.
I've, I've set you up.
Perfectly. Thank you. So we have a downtown TIF district. We have amended it from time to time for various reasons, most often because we have a proposal to do development in there that requires us to create a new district out of land that's currently in our downtown district. State law does not require you to have one parcel of property in multiple districts, so we have to take them out of the downtown, create a new district for them. So this proposal is to remove 6.8 acres, which is just one lot, J29-18, which we currently recognize as the site of the Stenton Mill Building. And it also is going to correct the financials for the downtown district to account for that property removal. So here is a map of the current downtown district. Everything that's in pink is a part of the district. You'll notice there's a couple of carve-outs here already. Most recently, these ones, can't really see my cursor, but these ones down here, Robert Street and Main Street, where we took out an Amendment 7 to create a new tax, tax increment financing district to support the development of the apartment units that are under construction, and the ones on Main Street, look, they're substantially completed by now. And some other ones here as well. The J29-18 parcel is up here with the big red circle around it. So that one will be coming out of the downtown district.
So people know it's the tower that burned, the half that did not burn across from central furniture that we're discussing.
Yeah. It's pretty visible, I would say, as these, as these things go. And given how many people ask me how things are going with that building and what's going to happen, I think people know what Stenton is. I just wanted to point it out on the map so we know what we're talking about. Correction to the financials in the downtown district require us to kind of go back in time and take that out, that value out of the original assessed value when the district was originally created. So I know the council knows this for, for the public's purposes, when you create a new tax district, tax increment financing district, excuse me, you establish an original assessed value, which is the taxable value in that district on the day that it's created, which actually, you go back to the, the previous tax assessment to grab that value, and that becomes held constant throughout the life of that district. Now that we're changing the property that's in the district, we go back in time, pull it out of the original assessed value, so that going forward, the downtown district is going to be calculated based on a new amended original assessed value. So the total value, I think that's coming out of this district, at the time, believe it or not, the value of this, well, probably it's not hard to believe at all, but the value of this property going back to 2000 and I think six, when the downtown district was, was first established, uh, dropped significantly. And the reason for that, it was originally around 800,000 something dollars in 2006. Today it's 200,000. Back in 2006, that building was still in a functional industrial use and there certainly was two towers there, not just one. So the value that's coming out of that, uh, 800,000 something dollars is significantly more than the original assessed value that we'll be putting into a new district today. So we actually lost money on the tax increment financing district in downtown because of Stenton, which is a weird thing to have happen. You don't often see that, but, um, anyway, our downtown district was a little bit strange in that sense. We did actually get underneath our original assessed value for a while. Stenton contributed to it.
We will be adding property, correct? Or doing a new district?
We are doing a new district. So the purpose of this, as a deputy mayor, as you pointed out, just to come back, the point of this is to take that property now in our next item and to roll it into a new tax increment financing district, which I'm glad to step into now unless there are any questions about just that amendment. So part two of this process is the creation of a new tax increment financing district. The, it's, it's a mouthful, East Side Neighborhood Revitalization Municipal Tax Increment Financing and Development District. East Side Neighborhood Revitalization TIF is my, is my shorthand for that. Uh, this is a picture that I unapologetically stole from someone else's website and I'll apologize now in case they're watching. Um, but I think it's a really nice picture of, of kind of an overview of the district that we're talking about and you can see Stenton sort of center, center picture there. This is the, the map of the proposed district. Tax increment financing, um, allows us to capture new tax relevant, uh, revenue in a development district and shelter it, which we're going to talk about in just a minute, and set aside the new revenue when there's new investment and new growth of the value in that district for certain state law permitted uses. That's the point of a tax increment financing district. We take the value of that district, we freeze it, and any dollar amount that it goes up above that becomes what we call captured value. And the tax revenue from that captured value gets set aside that the city can use for only certain state law allowed uses. Number one, we do that because tax increment financing was designed to be a way to address blight. And this is a neighborhood that I think we have seen a lot of activity in, uh, where there is a need to address blight, to address neighborhood revitalization, to foster more commercial growth. We've seen the loss of some small businesses, neighborhood scale businesses, and we've heard a lot of the, uh, from, uh, in the comprehensive planning process, as a matter of fact, we've heard some comments from some people that it would be great to have more of that back in this neighborhood, neighborhood scale commercial use. Secondly, um, creation of a TIF in this gives the city the opportunity to take those captured funds, set them aside for priority uses, and in this case, we're going to talk about some of the uses that are eligible here, um, in this district that can be, um, that those funds can be prioritized for and to do it over a longer period of time. We're constantly working on one-year budgets in municipal work. This is one of the only ways where you can say, we're going to be working on this for a longer period of time. We need to have money set aside for these priorities and in this case, we're looking at a 30-year period. So let's talk about some of the uses that are going to be in this TIF, um, for these captured revenues. Within the district, we can do an awful lot. That's the way TIF is designed. If you're capturing value from a particular district, the state law is very permissive, well, more permissive, I shouldn't say very. It's more permissive if you're spending that money right back in that particular district that you created. So it can be used for a lot of things, including acquiring land, improvements, public ways, buildings, public fixtures. We've utilized TIF to pay bonds on improvements here in Sanford, although that's not our preferred method, but it could be something we do if there's a project that's sizable enough where we do need to take a bond. Some of this TIF revenue can be used to offset, uh, the indebtedness on that bond. Um, state law was amended a couple of years ago to allow TIFs to, TIF revenues to be used for affordable housing and for homelessness remediation. It's become just a standard practice whenever we talk about TIFs now to include that because housing has been such an important piece of our economic development strategy and homelessness remediation has been such an important part of our overall public policy discussions for at least the last year, year and a half. But again, we're trying to put money aside for that high priority sort of function that seems to be a focus of, of the community right now. Uh, facility improvements. Uh, Matt's here. Um, we don't want to use all of this money for this, Matt, but we certainly could use it to do stormwater improvements. And I know we've talked about the need for stormwater in some of the downtown adjacent areas. Some of the infrastructure down there is very old. Um, sewer as well, public safety improvements and street amenities, and those can be sort of in the district or related to the district. So if we have a stormwater line or a sewer line that extends outside of this district but is serving this area, then these funds could be, uh, used to provide upgrades for that entire line. Economic development, which again is sort of a catch-all that we put in these, uh, tax increment financing districts, is one of those things that no matter where you're capturing value in your community, out of a TIF district, you can always use it for a municipal-wide, community-wide economic development strategy. And we have created this as an omnibus district. And what that essentially means, it's a way of telling the Department of Economic and Community Development in Augusta that, hey, there may be more credit enhancement agreements in the future if there's a proposal to do a project that's worthy of it. So we might have a, I don't have anything right now in mind, but we might have a project later on where somebody's coming in, acquiring an entire block of these lots and wanting to do a large multifamily development or something like that. And if they're looking and we think it's appropriate for the city, participate with a credit enhancement agreement, they have to go through every single step of the process to get that approved that they'd have to do in any other case. The only thing that's different is that instead of having to amend this TIF to say, oh, and there's also another credit enhancement agreement, we've gotten DECD to look at it and say, okay, we understand that may be something that comes up later on. It's just kind of a way of, of flagging it for them. The other use of TIF funds in this case, and we're going to come down to, um, really one of the most important pieces of this, that we do have a credit enhancement agreement proposed at this point, um, for, to assist in the redevelopment of the Stenton Mill site. And again, this is a highly visible site. It's a site that's in desperate need of redevelopment and according to our, um, codes department, we're really running out of the potential for having any useful utility of this building whatsoever. A couple more years of, uh, weather just absolutely infiltrating the building, deteriorating the structure, and it's just going to be a tear down. And that is a problem we would like to avoid. So if there's any potential for this to become a functional usable building, especially the potential for adding new downtown or downtown adjacent residential space, um, I think the city is interested in participating in it. I, I think, as you know, in 2024, we went to RFP on this to find a developer who might be interested in taking on this project. It is a large project. The Growth Council undertook a pretty bold marketing approach in saying, we need to get this RFP under the noses of some of the best qualified firms in the United States because the right person is out there, we just have to get them interested. And honestly, we found somebody very, very close by who we immediately targeted and said, this is the right firm, and that was Chinburg Properties. Their work in Bedford Saco, their work in Portsmouth, their work in New Market, New Hampshire, their work in Lewiston that they're undertaking right now, and of course, the work that they're doing right in Springvale at the Jagger Mill, um, gave them a portfolio that was really hard to ignore. So we're impressed with their work. We were able to reach out to them, talk to some people who were in the know and could make those types of decisions, and they said, yeah, we think we can do this. But it has always been part of the discussion that no matter what developer came forward, it's probably going to need some type of TIF support, just a question of how much. This is wrong. I apologize for that. Can't amend it here. Why is this not right? Um, I will amend this on the fly because that is incorrect. That's my typo and I apologize for it. So the credit enhancement agreement that we've negotiated out with them is a 20-year deal with a $3.5 million cap. This is actually from an old slideshow. That, I think, is, represents a really good deal for the city and there's a couple of reasons why. One of the points that was made at my board level was to the point that our, our code enforcement officer, uh, Jamie Cole made, how much useful utility do you have where this building can still be put into use? And how much is it going to cost to take it down? And someone on my board had pointed out, you might be looking at having to raise three and a half million dollars out of new tax revenue just to demolish and remove this structure in a couple of years. So would you rather pay that in one year to try to do the removal or pay it out over 20 years to help support the redevelopment and reuse of the building? So that's one reason. It is a 95% TIF for years one through 10, 80% for years 11 through 15, and 20% for 16 through 20. Now, my, my projections on this say that they're, they're really not likely to make it into year 15. Um, the value that they're going to be adding to this building, the value that our assessing department has kind of roughly guesstimated they think that it's going to be worth, um, shows that by the time they get to year 12, 13, 14, they're going to hit that three and a half million dollar cap. Um, I think for them, having a 20-year commitment was something that they wanted to be able to show to their financing bank to say that we're going to have support from the community through the life of our financing. So that made a big difference to them in that process. Their proposal, by the way, is to do a full exterior preservation, uh, a historic preservation of the exterior of the building and to do restoration of, of some other, some other aspects of the building that could be considered historic. They talked about some of the features that are inside, and there aren't many of them that are really beautiful and worth preserving, but there are some interesting features that they would like to try to incorporate into their design. Um, it involves landscaping on the site, the entire site, and some hardscape as well, parking and new traffic movement improvements to get residents in and out of the site safely, and obviously window replacements because there aren't many left on that building, and of course, fixing the roof, which right now is, is, uh, in terrible condition. Interior-wise, they're talking about 150 units, a combination of studio, one-bedroom and two-bedroom apartments, and some tenant amenities and property management offices. Uh, this is an expensive project and, um, we have expected that all the way through, when we know. Um, they hosted a walk-through of the building for the Growth Council Board. I know Councilor Hanselman took part in that and it really did highlight what the challenges are for them to have to redevelop this space just on the interior. This is an important piece of this that I know, uh, we don't highlight as strong as I feel like we should. There is a benefit not only to being able to capture revenue that comes out of a TIF and set it towards some of those priority projects that we want to fund, but there is also a benefit to sheltering that value. And essentially, here's how that works. Every time a dollar above that OAV goes up, that value goes up, that money is not only captured, but it's also sheltered from certain programs. And there is a, what's called a tax shift benefit to the community for every dollar that's sheltered. So generally, this is how the math works out. We have always looked at it as about a 50/50 split. In other words, you save 50 cents on the dollar for every dollar you shelter in a TIF. We've seen that number change. I have it at 61% now, um, which is remarkable. So the math on that is that we're projecting over 30 years that we're going to capture a total of 37.8, give or take, million dollars, um, in tax revenue. The total protected shift benefit, so the benefit to the community over 30 years in, um, capturing that is over $23 million, and that's 61 cents on every dollar. So, uh, that's a huge benefit. And that, the way that works out, we, it's calculated to be about 13 and a half million dollars, uh, on state aid to education, which is our benefit on state aid to education is calculated based on our municipal valuation and we're sheltering this value away from that calculation. On our county taxes, again, our county taxes are calculated based on our valuation. This is sheltered from that equation, so we're saving money on county taxes over $800,000 over 30 years. And on other state revenue sharing programs, we're saving by our math about eight and a quarter, eight and three quarters million dollars over 30 years. So there's significant benefit to the community just in being able to shelter this value. Um, 61 cents on a dollar, which is really remarkable to me that it's, it's continued to go up, um, the benefit to utilizing TIF. So, uh, here we go. These are the correct numbers. Um, I think I just left one slide in there that didn't belong. So it's important to note that the value of their credit enhancement agreement is going to be calculated based only on increases in the value of the parcel that the Stenton Mill is on. We're not talking about that entire map of pink properties that I showed at the beginning of this slideshow because it seems like it would be an unfair windfall to them if work that they weren't even contributing to added a whole bunch of value to this district and they got a, a bigger payment out of this credit enhancement agreement for it. Cap would still be in place, but that still didn't seem right and we didn't want to approve on that. So they've agreed that this calculation is just strictly for this one parcel of property. 20 years at a three and a half million dollar cap, 95 years for years one through 10, 80% through years 11 through 15, and 20% in the last four years. The process for a credit enhancement agreement has been revised over the last year, how a, a business or a developer like this comes forward to request it. And I think it's important to highlight for the community what went into that process in deciding that this was the right way to do this and that this was the one that should come forward. So I think the council knows that this has to go before the Growth Council. Mary Hastings and myself, we act sort of like the clearinghouse when these requests come in. We do an awful lot of engagement with these developers to collect information from them, to understand their entire pro formas for their project, to identify that there's a gap, that we're not just enriching a developer who doesn't actually need it, looking at the project they're proposing, evaluating the cost of that project and figuring out whether or not it is in fact a project that is of a certain size and of a benefit that's worth it for the community to participate in. We've added to our policy a certain number of findings that the, that the Growth Council Board needs to make factual findings and before they can make a recommendation to this council that, hey, this is a good deal and we think you ought to pass it. So these are important things that my board looked at and said, yes, factually, we find that this is correct. And number one, that this project would not be feasible without this credit enhancement agreement. They can't do this project without this additional money being added in to allow them to take additional debt through traditional financing to afford this project. Secondly, we've taken the gap that we've identified in their financing and tailored this deal as much as possible, as tightly as possible, to fit the gap that we know exists. Utilizing a three and a half million dollar cap is the best way to do that because if this property goes gangbusters high in value right off the bat for whatever reason, it doesn't matter, they're still only getting that much money. If they get it sooner, good for them, good for us, everybody wins. Um, so that's, uh, one of the ways that we're going to try to employ as much as possible to try to make sure we're hitting a certain number, meeting a gap, and then the city's contribution and the city's participation is over. Third, that the developer's capacity to do a project like this in their portfolio show a successful and responsible track record of development. I can't think of a better example than Chinburg when it comes to a project like this, so that one was particularly easy to find. That overall, this TIF is going to be revenue positive to the city over the life of the district. That is also very easy to find because again, our commitment to this is relatively low at only three and a half million dollars. Uh, and also, we're talking about a TIF district that is much larger than this one particular parcel. So there's a lot of value to be captured and gathered out of this. And of course, we just talked about the tax shift benefit that adds a huge amount of revenue positive reasons for this community to participate. Uh, and lastly, that this meets high priority economic development objectives. This was another pretty easy one to find, but just to highlight a few, mill redevelopment is one of the, one of the things that's mentioned in our current comp plan as a huge priority. We've also talked about the need for workforce housing. This will provide 150, give or take, the number shifts up and down as Chinburg continues to do some of their work. Um, workforce housing in high transportation corridors where there's access to public transportation and where it's close access to downtown. Uh, and there are other ones as well, just other than attracting new investment and things like that, these meet a few of our, our economic development objectives. So our board unanimously, when we looked at it, um, voted to pass, recommend that the council approve this TIF and then authorize the city manager to enter into a credit enhancement agreement as proposed. So this is a big project. This is an important project. This is a big new TIF district, a lot of properties in it, a whole neighborhood. We're talking about neighborhood revitalization here for the East Side. So I feel like I've gone on for an awfully long time, but, um, I'm very excited about this and I could probably go on an awful lot longer just to talk about how, how great this is going to be to get this done. But I think I will stop there and be glad to take any questions that you might have.
This is a reminder, we have an agenda item. This is a public hearing.
It is a public hearing.
So I'm going to open up to the public either to, um, comment for or against on the Eighth Amendment to the, uh, Downtown Omnibus Municipal Tax District that would take out the Stenton Trust Mill. to the Downtown Omnibus Municipal Tax District that would take out the Stenton Trust Mill. And then the second part of this is the design of the new East Side Neighborhood Revitalization Municipal Tax Increment Financing District that includes a neighborhood nearby as well as the Stenton Trust Mill. So if there are any people to speak in favor, anybody to speak against? You're in favor. You want to speak? Mr. Hill, our Public Works Director?
Just speaking in favor, Keith had mentioned infrastructure improvements, and I know that
You want all the money, I know.
That area is a good target.
Yeah, we actually have work being done in that neighborhood as part of the
The Raze Grant Project.
Wait, wait. No, no, I want to use the new words. Build project.
Raise slash build.
The raise slash build.
Yeah, there'll be a drainage line put down North Avenue onto High Street, but we seriously considered going down Island Avenue. So yeah, we've had some
I can see why, actually, knowing the landscape. But yep, so there are definitely good reasons for investment by the community in that neighborhood. So nobody to speak in favor or against? I'll declare the public hearings closed. The consent agenda, which is your agenda item, 25-357-01. Is there any objection to passing the consent agenda this evening? Seeing none, you are done. You have your permit. I usually encourage people when they get to this section to run like the wind, so you don't have to listen to the rest of the meeting. Good luck. People are very excited to have the restaurant back open in the community. I've heard lots of positive. Old Business, 25-369-01, ordered to adopt amendments to Sanford ordinances, Article II, Parks, Schools, Malls and Cemeteries, Section 158-4, prohibited acts to change closing hours to read from sunset to sunrise. This item must be read on two separate occasions. This is the second reading, and there have been a couple of changes, including the sunset to sunrise, because those are, you can go online and find that time. So it's actually a documented time. What was the other thing, Steve?
And the last, Ben, if you could put that up on the, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, it was a school as well.
My fault, Ben. I've got it on the screen for us now, Ben. Yeah, so in here, the Second Amendment was to, unless the, so the city council by specific permission can grant the city council the utilization of the parks after these particular hours, the city authorized or school district authorized events is taking place in such a space. That was added in in recognition of the school events, school sanctioned events that would be happening potentially in the parks as well, such as baseball games, soccer events, and other such utilizations.
Exactly. I figured we did not want to start having to approve all of the things occurring on school property after hours. So. Sound good? Are there any comments in favor or against? And are there any comments from the city council? Yes, Council Martell?
So just to clarify for people, I know there's been some concerns around parking along the street and walking through. Neither of those activities are prohibited?
No.
It would be parking within, like a parking lot inside the park. And if you want to walk your dog through the park, you're okay. So I just wanted to clarify that, and I do appreciate the people that did provide feedback to make sure we had clarified that. So, thank you.
Okay. Are there any other comments? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. Council Hanselman?
Madam Deputy Mayor, I make a motion to adopt the amendments to the Sanford ordinances, Article II, Parks, Schools, Malls and Cemeteries.
Thank you. Could I have a second? Council Martell?
I'll second that.
Thank you. No other further questions or comments? All those in favor? Or to zero? 25-373-01, ordered to adopt and approve, oh, do we want to do the Eighth Amendment first? Probably. Okay, I'm going to switch the two agenda items. 25-376-01, ordered to adopt and approve the Eighth Amendment to the Sanford Downtown Omnibus Municipal Tax Increment Financing District to remove a parcel that will become the Stenton Trust Mill project and part of a new TIF district, namely City Tax Map J29 Lot 18. Could I have a motion? Councilor, would you like to make this one? Because I understand why.
It was subconscious. It had a raise a hand. Madam Deputy Mayor, I move to adopt and approve the Eighth Amendment to the Sanford Downtown Omnibus Municipal Tax Increment Financing District.
Thank you. Council Martell?
And I will second that.
Thank you. Are there any comments, questions? Again, we've talked about this a few times in executive session as well, so we've probably been given them enough questions. All those in favor? Nobody else here? Just going to leave it at that. 25-373-01, ordered to adopt and approve the East Side Neighborhood Revitalization Municipal Tax Increment Financing District consisting of 32.07 acres and to authorize the city manager to enter into a credit enhancement agreement with a developer for a portion of the district, specifically City Tax Map J29 Lot 18. Could I have a motion? Council Hanselman?
So moved, Madam Deputy Mayor.
Second? Council Hitchcock?
I'll second.
Okay. Any other comments or questions on this? This is the creation of a larger district. Yes, Council Martell?
Just to clarify, that particular lot that's spelled out, can we give a little bit of information for the public so they understand a little better what's going on with that one?
Sure. So that J2918 is the parcel that the, let's see, we have it here, is the one where the Stenton Mill is located?
Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
If there's anything more specific we
But it includes all the other lots as well.
This new tax increment financing district will include the other lots, but the order is allowing the city manager to enter into a credit enhancement agreement specifically for that portion of the district. Yeah, that's an important distinction.
Okay. Thank you.
Manager Buck?
I just wanted to comment very positively that I've been here for nearly 15 years. From day one, this has been a project that's been in the scope of, you know, current counselors, longtime counselors, past counselors. I will forever hear in my mind, you know, Councilor Tuttle saying to me, never going to happen, Stephen, right, over and over and over, because it was so overwhelming, the scope of the project. And we're getting very close now, I'm knocking on wood when I say this, right? To have a well-healed, very experienced developer, we always knew that the city would have to have some contribution in tax increment financing in here. I want to commend Keith and the Growth Council. The Growth Council really has a strong command on tax increment financing. If you hear the engaged conversation that's in there now and the recommendations they're making back to the city council, it's very well-reviewed and well-healed, and that gets here to this point. And to have it taking in not just the building, but a district that's in need of redevelopment is very strong. It's an exceptional development program. And again, I want to thank our Economic Development Director Keith McBride for the work on this. It's exceptionally good work. So, thank you very much.
Yes. I think we're all excited. Any other questions? All those in favor? No, thank you. I believe the next two may be the Police Department. 25-375-01, ordered to accept a donation from Harrison Development LLC in the amount of $4,000 in support of the Sanford Police Department's K-9 program with initial expenditures to include a bite suit, bite sleeve, sleeve cuff, and gauntlet, which has an estimated value of $2,134.88.
Hi, Eric Small, Police Chief. We were very fortunate to have Chris Russell, who was our professional development coordinator, had a previous relationship with his work when he worked at the Kenny Bunk Police Department, and he knew us to Harrison, and that connection brought this money here to the Sanford Police Department. So he'd like to donate $4,000 and to start out by buying those things to the K-9 program for K-9 Maximus and his handler Officer Cotton.
Wonderful. Do I have a motion? Council Martell?
I'll make a motion to accept the donation from Harrison Development LLC for the $4,000 for the K-9 program.
Thank you. Could I have a second, Council Hitchcock?
Graciously second.
Wonderful. All those in favor? Thank you. You have the next one, right?
Yeah, I'd like to thank David Harrison, too. Very, very lucky. So thank you, David.
Yes, thank you.
The next one is
Wait, I got to read it.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, sorry.
25-383-01, ordered, the city council hereby accepts grant approval pursuant to 15 MRSA Section 5824 Subsection 3 and Section 5826, 6, to the transfer of $1,175 US currency to the city of Samford.
Yeah, it's not exactly a grant. It's a forfeit, forfeiture, and it was from a traffic stop. And the credit should go to now-retired Officer Raymond, who got this money from a drug trafficking case.
Do I have a motion? To accept? Council?
Madam Deputy Mayor, move to accept the transfer of $1,175 to the city of Sanford.
Thank you. Council Hanselman?
And I would second that.
All those in favor? There you go.
Thank you.
Waiting all night for these two simple ones. Thank you. I'm sure you've enjoyed yourself, though. 25-379-01, ordered to approve amendments to the bylaws of the Sanford Arts Commission. Who's taking this?
Good evening, everybody.
Brady. Hello, Brady.
There's a couple of amendments that the Arts Commission was reviewing. In Article 4, they would like the chair duties to be shared by more than one member or assigned by individual meetings. In Article 5, the fourth, we just changed the date of the meetings because that's what the committee agreed upon. And then the big part of this is the last sentence of Article 5 that reads, "A quorum shall be a simple majority of the voting members in attendance at a meeting of the commission." We've had a handful of meetings where we haven't had a quorum, so they haven't been able to vote on that, and that's the reasoning behind it. And then there is one little period at the very end of Article 6 that was not included that we have included.
Okay. Could I have a motion?
Madam Deputy Mayor, I make a motion to approve the amendments to the, or should I just lose that? The Sanford Arts Commission. Thank you.
Bylaws, bylaws. You really need to bring me a glass.
Yeah, it's my head injury, actually. I don't blame it on that.
And a second, please. Council Hitchcock?
I'll second.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments? Yes, Council Martell?
Thank you for presenting this. I think, not that I've been involved with this very much, but I think the chair duties could be shared, but maybe that needs to be a little better defined. Would that be just whoever can do it at that meeting?
So how it's been happening, they've been voting on a chair at, say, a current meeting for the following month, to chair the next month's meeting.
Okay. And then typically, a quorum is a certain number of officers and then some number of members. This, to me, doesn't really make sense. I could see like that for voting, but not, you know, a quorum is like how many people you need to have conduct business. So that doesn't really make sense to me. Can you maybe explain that a little?
I'll try my best. Dave Parent came up with this line. He said he's used it in other boards that he's been on. So we have not been getting all of the appointed members to the meetings, and that's why we haven't been able to vote, because we haven't had a quorum. We haven't had that majority of the folks who are appointed attending the meetings. So this, in my understanding, says those who are appointed that are at a meeting, as long as the majority votes, we can still get business done.
Council Hanselman?
Well, and I was just going to add, having sat on a lot of boards made up of volunteers, and they're the same volunteers, right, on almost every board, it feels like attendance becomes the issue with a larger commission. And so I think they're just trying to make sure they can get business done when they have a lack of attendance, was my impression. And it seems reasonable.
So would this be a majority of the members, like there's some set number of voting members, like say 10 people on a commission or something? Is that kind of how you're saying that this is set up?
Well, if you go back to Article 2, it defines that the commission shall consist of no more than 12 voting members appointed by the city council sworn in by the city clerk. As this is a regional effort, people who live outside of Sanford may serve, but a minimum of 2/3 of the current members of the board shall be qualified to vote in Sanford and Springville. I'll be the non-voting ex officio member. Every effort shall be made to ensure that membership of the commission reflects the interests of the, I think I'm reading the wrong part. But typically, if everybody who was appointed shows up, then we have a full quorum and the majority votes, and then we can get business done. But we haven't been getting that. So the line that Dave added into this is, it's still a majority vote, but it's just of those who are in attendance of the meeting.
So I think I'd like to see this adjusted to a quorum shall consist of voting members present, or something along those lines. And maybe that's kind of what you're saying here?
It says, "A quorum shall be a simple majority of the voting members in attendance at a meeting."
But the simple majority, it would be around voting, not a quorum. So a quorum is, do you have enough people there to actually have a meeting? So you could say a quorum consists of the voting members present, you know, and that would be recorded in the minutes. And then, you know, any votes would be a majority of the members present.
I see what he's saying. It's two separate things. Yep.
So I'd like to see this updated slightly. I mean, it's
I could say, "A quorum shall be a simple majority of the current membership."
I think they're having trouble getting a majority
I understand. There's supposed to be 12 members. They might only have six or eight, and so that
Is that what you're getting at? And please clarify if you can.
We have, I believe, to date, 10 active members on the board, and the past five or six months, we've been getting three to four people to show up to the actual meetings.
Okay, so I guess the question would be, does the board overall, are they okay with three people making the decision for 12, for a 12-member board?
For the 10 that are appointed. So I know there's supposed to be 12, but what we're saying is we're having trouble filling the 12.
Okay.
So that's one problem, which is what you're talking about. And the second problem is the people showing up at the meeting. So how many people do you need to call it a meeting? Is one part.
Yeah, you could say, you know, four people or five, or whatever makes sense.
So you could say, "A quorum shall consist of a minimum of
Four people.
Four people. They can't make any decisions without at least four people being there. And then it would be a simple majority for any decisions beyond that?
But I think they're actually intentionally trying to make it a circular equation, right? So they're trying to make sure they can do business even if only two people show up.
Correct.
So can I, like, let's be realistic here. It's an arts commission. They do great work, but they can't make any major decisions without going to city council. They're mostly making recommendations, or they're doing community-minded things. So that's why I'm, go ahead.
I was going to say, thank you. I was just going to say that that was my concern. Like, I saw the issue there, essentially reading this to say two people could be, you know, deciding in a meeting of three. Like, that definitely is the way I read it. But at the end of the day, from a practical standpoint, I understand they come up with a budget, but, you know, the major, like, funding decision, I think, comes through the city council anyway. So if there's money allotted to the program, then I'm not the most concerned that they're going to sort of go wild, because the major thing that we want to make sure it's regulated is their budget, which is something that we can control. So, you know, if they go over budget, that's unfortunately on them. They need to have their members show up to meetings, and something we could always monitor as well.
Do we want to have a motion that we can go up and down on? There's only four of us, so I'd like to try to get everybody to have a comfort level with the wording.
I think that they're trying to get to something with the quorum that doesn't really make sense. So if we could adjust that to maybe, you know, "Quorum shall consist of members present," I'd be fine with that.
Quorum shall consist, that's not bad. A quorum shall consist of the members present and a simple majority
For any votes.
For any votes. Something like that? We can make that adjustment.
So could that be an output from this, or do we need to bring this back?
I think that could be an output from it.
Okay.
Do we want to, does anybody have any ideas for the exact wording, or do you think, should we do the exact wording for the vote? A quorum shall So it's part one.
Majority
Yeah.
That sounds good. Did you hear what she said?
Majority of members present.
Yeah, a simple majority. Yeah, okay. So that wording sounded good. Do you want to read it so that we can approve it as a motion?
So we will amend it, Brady, to say, "A quorum shall consist of the members present and a simple majority shall prevail in a vote."
Sounds good to me.
That works, and I'll make that change to it tomorrow morning.
Thank you, Brady. Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Could I have a motion?
So I'll, since I caused the So I'll, since I cause the most commotion, I'll make a motion to amend this as read by Larissa.
Thank you. Could I have a second, please? Council Hitchcock?
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor? Thank you. It does the job, Brady.
Thank you very much.
Twenty-five dash three eight five dash zero one, order to authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with Tyler Technologies for annual provision of planned annual continued education, PACE, training, and consultation for the City of Sanford's Enterprise ERP, Munis products. Okay, go ahead.
What's being requested is, uh, so HR Finance brought this forward. Uh, we continue to look forward, thinking as far as succession planning here in the, in the city. Currently, we are overly reliant on a Director of IS Services for the maintenance of our Munis package, as well as the implementation of the, the entire package annually. Uh, he, he attend, attends annual training and then brings that knowledge back. Uh, we have, uh, an individual in payroll that's been going through an extensive amount of training. What we have come to realize is the city is not using our, our purchased package to its full potential. In order to accomplish that, Munis, Tyler, offers this PACE contract, which, which cuts our training cost in half. Um, and, and we, we will be able to build that in uh, for the requisite number of hours per year, um, for eight-hour, uh, four or eight-hour increments. Um, and but before we would start that training, part of this package is they'll do a full assessment on how we use the, uh, our purchased software now, what elements that we aren't using or aren't using to its full potential, so we can then better identify where these targeted training hours are. So it's, it's not just a matter of being able to be more efficient in our work and utilize our, our overall accounting and payroll package, uh, better, but it's also about, uh, the tax, tax billing that we do. So currently, now when the tax bills are generated, the assessing department operates in vision. They, they do all of the assessment work, create the, the records in vision, and then that valuation for each of the parcels is handed over to Munis to then generate the tax bills. Uh, we only have one person that is knowledgeable on how to do that right now. No organization should be hampered by that. Uh, so we would train a number of people via this process, uh, to, to become adept with our assessing department, our treasurer and a finance department being able to all implement that handoff, so we're not relying on just one, one, one person. So, uh, I saw that go out on the managers' listserv this year. There was a, there was an issue on, I can't remember which, it was on the, uh, on one of the exemptions. Uh, and it just, it just went rampant on the managers' listserv uh, until it was figured out, uh, and then that knowledge was passed around. So, uh, again, this provides for the targeted training. Uh, they would come here to do the training, so we're not time and travel and all that sort of deal. They come in here, it's pre-scheduled, and we can put all of our requisite people in there. So it's, I think, I'm trying to remember, I think it was a cost of fifty-two-hundred?
Fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven hundred dollars. Um, Finance Department has confirmed that, uh, we can pay for that out of this year's training, uh, budget for the IS department. Uh, so we're making a recommendation that the city council would please pass this contract, and we can start a reduced-cost training program here, uh, within the city hall.
Perfect. Could I have a motion? Council Hitchcock?
So move, Madam Deputy Mayor.
Second. Council Martel?
I'll second that.
Any comments or questions?
I, I will, I will further point out that, uh, in, in negotiating this contract, we asked for something that they typically don't do, imagine that. So, um, yeah, so, um, we, we recognize where we have not had the PACE assessment done yet.
Yep.
Uh, we knew that, we knew the hours that were described in the contract. We felt that we might need more, but we don't know until we have the assessment done. So I asked for, to be able to have the same reduced rate at the nine-hundred-and-fifty dollars per training day. To be included in here, that if we decide that we need two additional days of training, that we can ask for that, put it into the contract before we implement, you know, so after the assessment and before we pull the trigger on this, we'd come back and ask for the, the additional sum to be allocated, but we don't, we don't know. We have, we have a sum, we have a, an assumption of what we need, but we don't know till the full assessment is done. So we, they've reserved that in here for us.
Okay. Everybody understand that? Okay. All those in favor? Thank you. Twenty-five dash three seven four dash zero one, order to approve a proposed twenty-five-twenty-six winter contract for snow plowing and treatment services from Landry Landscaping for public parking lots. Mr. Hill?
Yes, thank you. So, uh, last winter, we engaged Landry Landscaping to perform public, uh, parking lot snow plowing services, uh, for some of the city's lots in this year with the retirement of Roger Gilmet. Uh, Matt Landry is, is poised to take over. Uh, he has, uh, submitted a proposal to us, which we find acceptable. He has an excellent record of performance, and, uh, his ability to respond to the needs of, you know, the, the commercial entities in, particularly in the Midtown Mall parking lot, is much improved over ours, as we are usually, you know, out treating their terraeus and collectors as previously presented.
Excellent. Are there any questions about the contract? Council Martel?
Um, thank you for presenting this. Um, has this gone out to any sort of bidding process?
No.
And can you explain a reason for that?
There's very few contractors that are available to do so, um, particularly on kind of the on-call basis that we need. Gilmet's former contract with the Midtown Mall was kind of also just one of these, if we go out, we will likely find that it's, it's more expensive. Uh, we did do last year an informal survey of contracts we thought were local and likely to, to do well for us. I think Deputy Director Pete Smith, uh, gathered bids from, I think, five or six bidders, and Landry's was the lowest.
Okay.
So this, uh, this proposal for him this year extends that Midtown Mall parking lot at approximately the same square foot rate as, uh, the other lots he'd been doing.
Yeah, thank you.
But no, it's not gone through a public.
All right. And then one other question. Um, under the required safety equipment, it requires trucks to be registered and inspected and insured. Does that, um, also include equipment? I'm guessing not, and, um, is that something we should require?
It does include inspection from our, our garage maintenance supervisor. So, uh, whatever inspection, license, certification, and, uh, you know, on the particular piece of vehicle or equipment, he's making sure it's got it, and it's in good shape.
Thank you.
Council Hansman?
No, go, go ahead.
And it's just a small clarification. I think it's Main Street Marketplace.
Thank you.
Did you wish to make that correction?
I like the raised grand.
Very, very much so. It shows how long we've been around. We call it Midtown, right? We're still working on that.
I've actually been using the, the, uh, the, the new name quite a lot. It just, uh, up here, I'm under pressure.
It does, it does happen the older we get, Matt. Manager Buck, you had a comment?
Yeah, so I've knocked on a lot of wood tonight when Matt says, "Oh, we're, we're full, staffed. I'm knocking on wood." "Oh, you know, maintenance, maintenance is under budget. I'm knocking on wood." The contract that was taken out last year when we were extremely short-staffed, we didn't have enough drivers to fill the seats. We had a one-year extension of a, of a, of a second contract for South Sanford. So one of the, the elements that was done in that short, short-staffed situation was to go out to bid and have Landry's do, uh, the parking lot here at City Hall, um, at School Street and, and the Police Department. That was outstanding, uh, in that they, they did an exceptional, uh, level of service. They came back and re-cleared, because you have to plow around vehicles, and they treated on a regular schedule. So when I, typical storm morning, when I'm, when I'm up, uh, between four-thirty and five, and I'm talking with Pete Smith out on the road, and I'm doing an assessment where, where everybody's at, looking at the plow ops, uh, and asking, "When can crews get to the parking lot so that we can open up for the day and such unto that?" Uh, that was a non-consideration last year, because we knew that it was taken care of, and we could keep our crews wholly out on the road. So I just wanted to point that out, that this is extremely advantageous, because we can't contract for our in-town plow routes. Nobody will touch it. They won't, they won't do the in-town work. They'll do the long hauls out in the country. Uh, we have a, a long-term contractor that does an exceptionally good job for us, and I thank him for that. Um, but the in-town stuff, we can't even contract out. So this takes that burden off and allows our, our, you know, seats, our drivers in the seats to, to stay on those roads and not take time out, uh, on critical storm events to do parking lots. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have a motion yet? I'd like to entertain a motion for this one. Council Hitchcock?
I'll move to approve the contract.
Thank you, Council Hansman.
And I would second that.
All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Twenty-five dash one nine nine dash zero one, a very sad one. "Order to approve the additional three-day cleanup of trash and hazardous waste at Twenty-Six Gharish Drive in the amount of twenty-eight thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars and eighty-six cents." Yes. Ms. LeBri, our Assistant City Manager, is here to give us the bad news.
Good evening. Uh, yes, so if you recall, a while back, um, we received an initial quote from Clean Harbors, um, to clean up the hazardous waste and the trash at Twenty-Six Gharish, and it was going to take, um, six days to do. So in conversations with them, we had really hoped, um, that we, we could have gotten it done in a condensed time, being mindful of cost. So we entered, um, a contract with them to do it for three days. What the city was unaware of was that the amount of trash buried on the property was far greater than we could have ever anticipated. So, um, they came in for the three days. They, uh, the primary, um, objective of the job was to get the needles. So they got as many visible needles, needles as they could, um, and they uncovered some trash, but then they just kept uncovering and uncovering and uncovering. Jamie did have conversations with, um, our rep at Clean Harbors when we realized that it didn't get as much as we had hoped, that that three days. They did, in good faith, come back and put in another half a day's of work, because there was, um, a structure, a trailer on the back property. So they went in and made sure they got those needles and any other visible needles off of there. Um, but in more communications with them, um, we realized that the whole back part of the property hasn't been touched. So I've got some pictures to show you. I went out today, just so you can still see, um, what the actual property actually looks like and the amount of trash that's all on the backside of that property, and more needles. Um, we're anticipating that there's still more buried, because Clean Harbors just couldn't get back there. So ultimately, um, I think we need to finish the job, and we need to go in and finish cleaning it up, um, just because it presents such a liability, um, with known hazardous waste there. So in talking with our rep at, uh, Clean Harbors, he has given us another three-day quote, um, for the twenty-eight thousand, seven-fifty-five, eighty-six, but in talking with him today, he's extremely hopeful that he can get it done, um, for less. I just don't have that, obviously, amount. There was, um, extreme weather conditions when they were initially here too for those three days, so I think that might have slowed them down just a little bit. It, uh, downpoured two out of the three days. Um, and then, uh, he was on vacation as well, so he really wasn't here to oversee it. Um, so he's just hoping that he would be on site and assures the city, because he knows that we're a little disappointed that it didn't get as done as much as that we had hoped.
This has been a big one. Seems like everyone is worse than the last one.
Yes.
Okay. Council Martel, go ahead.
Um, so while we are not too thrilled with having to see extra expenses, um, we should see this money back when the property gets sold eventually. Um, do we expect any additional, well, I don't want to use the word surprises, but, um, do we think that this will probably be the last round of any additional work that's needed?
We certainly hope so. We certainly hope so.
All right, thank you.
Do we have a motion? Council Hansman?
I would make a motion to approve the additional three-day cleanup of trash and hazardous waste at Twenty-Six Gharish Drive in the maximum amount of twenty-eight thousand, seven-fifty-five, in hopes it's lower.
Could I have a second, Council Martel?
I will second that.
Thank you. All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Twenty-five dash three eight nine dash zero one, order to authorize the city manager to enter into a memorandum of understanding with main access points for a one-year pilot program in Sanford to amend the syringe service program to end syringe distribution and collection. Okay.
Me?
I'm, I'm sorry, Manager Buck, I'm sorry. I just assumed you'd start talking. You love, you love this topic. You love this topic, so go ahead. You're all set.
So this is, this is a really tough topic. Um, the city has worked with, uh, DHS, specifically the CDC, on this, this matter of syringe service, uh, distribution here in our city for, for a number of years. So I didn't pull the full history in here, but it goes back to, uh, two thousand and sixteen, approximately, um, with various levels of syringe service programs offered here. Uh, we, we went through the, the change during COVID years whereby the CDC, through emergency rulemaking, and then ultimately they adopted thereafter, they changed the syringe service program, programming that had been in existence for nearly twenty years as a one-to-one, uh, exchange program. You bring a dirty needle in, you get a new, new clean needle. They changed that during COVID to what they call a one-to-one plus, whereby you could come in with or without any needles, receive up to a hundred needles, and do that multiple times per week. So during that period, there was an extensive amount of, uh, needles that were given out. Our city, not, uh, just as you, as you just saw with Twenty-Six Gharish Drive, the reason the cost of that is so high is the, um, solid waste receivers will no longer take the contamination in, so the needles have to be separated out. So you're going to have, in the neighborhood of sixty thousand dollars of contaminated trash caused by specialized services and separations in order to achieve on that one property. When the city was looking at this, this matter, we've looked at it extensively over the years. Uh, one of the presentat, the part of presentation that was made at, at our October meeting, where we had main access points here, who is the, uh, state licensed syringe service program provider here in Sanford, um, as well as we had Gordon Smith, who is the, uh, in the Governor's Office of Innovation and Policy. He is the opioid advisor to the governor, was here as well. Uh, and we had a very concerted, uh, dialogue around, so we gave them the example of four properties. Uh, I don't have that spreadsheet open here tonight, but we gave them the example of four properties whereby the city had expended, uh, nearly two-hundred thousand dollars on those four known properties, and we had documentation of retrieving over forty thousand needles off of those four properties. So we, we talked through that process, um, that the city was again reiterating the fact that there's two hu, public health crises out there. A, there's the, the drug addiction that, that musters the volume of needles that are being used. The CDC seeks through its harm reduction program to, to prevent bloodborne pathogen diseases from being spread, HIV, hep, all of the various forms of hepatitis, uh, as well as infection that comes in the womb care from, from people using, uh, syringe, syringes to that extent. Uh, what we didn't get until recently, we could not get recognition by the CDC that there's a public health crisis that's been created by the inappropriately discarded needles, the sheer volume that are out there for, for public, for contamination and public exposure. We could not get that recognition until just this juncture in time. So recently, the city council gave me a directive that, um, either the syringe service program had to go away in its entire entirety, or something else had to be done as far as the vo, sheer volume of syringes that were out there and being thrown away in our community. So to that end, what came out of that October meeting was the compromise could, could be, if the council would approve this, a memorandum of understanding, the first in the state, that would establish a pilot program whereby main access points, who is the state licensed syringe service provider, SSP, here in Sanford, would cease the distribution of syringes by December fifth of this year. Uh, and that includes paraphernalia that's handed out as well. But they would continue to operate. They would also close their bricks and mortar, their storefront. They would stop their, their collection ban that they have there as well. Uh, but they would continue to provide the other services and other... But they would continue to provide the other services, and I'll pull a record up on that in just a moment because I can't do it all off the top of my head. They would continue for the counseling services, the medical assistance and the other services that we'll look at in just a minute. They would continue that. They would report out to the CDC and the city would get that data on a monthly basis as well as to what that amended program looked like, what it was doing as far as the number of referrals and other interactions that they would have. And they would do that, not differently than what they originally started with a mobile service. They would go directly to the individuals most impacted, take the resources directly to them rather than waiting for them to come to their bricks and mortar locations. So that would be all part of the MOU. So the MOU is in the packet. Main access points and their legal counsel in conjunction with the state developed the MOU. I find no need to amend the MOU in its current form because it lays out all of the terms that I've talked to you about extensively. They'll cease as of December 5th the distribution of syringes. They'll stop their bricks and mortar location on Main Street, but they will continue to operate the non-SSP services, including without limitation overdose prevention education, naloxone distribution, distribution of testing supplies, drug checking, peer support, referrals for medical and psychiatric care, distribution of snacks and beverages, distribution of clothing and essential supplies, distribution of womb care and hygiene supplies, HIV and HCV rapid testing and referrals for treatment through the mobile operations focused on the city's unhoused population.
Quick question in this section. We were talking about the syringes. What about the other paraphernalia?
Paraphernalia is not specifically listed out here. If you feel that needs to be put in here, I have an understanding that that would cease as well, but if you feel that specific language needs to be in here, I could ask for that amendment.
Continue, I'm sorry.
All right. They'd close their bricks and mortar location and then the data sharing during the pilot period MAP would provide quarterly information, I'm sorry, quarterly, not monthly, quarterly information to Sanford regarding its continued work within the city of Sanford, including without limitation the number of encounters, number of naloxone kits distributed, number of referrals provided and such other data MAP may gather from time to time. So I know that in this process, let me, all right. Then Sanford and MAP agree that at the end of the pilot period, which is one year, representatives of Sanford and MAP will review the data gathered by MAP and other relevant data gathered by the main CDC, Sanford or other mutually agreeable sources and assess and discuss the impact of the pilot period service changes and at the end of the SSP on the community's health and safety and to collaborate in good faith to make further recommendations as to any future service changes that would be in the best interest of the community. There's a lot of good faith in that statement. So I want to commend main access points. On behalf of the city, I have not expressed any inappropriate operation by the SSP. They've operated consistently within the rules and regulations as they're licensed by the state of Maine. The difficulty has been the disagreeance on the harm reduction program and the outside impacts that was outside of the traditionally structured program. So I also will commend them for developing this and I am grateful to the state CDC for willing to initiate a pilot program and examine this. I'm eager to be part of that study so we can see what that looks like. I had in your packet this particular brief that talks about the state data. I'm gonna pull up a different one for you this evening. It's the same except for I had asked the director of MAP. So each year, let me pull up the subsequent report right here. All right, so each year pursuant to legislative direction, the syringe service programs, the what, forty-some-odd of them that there are, they report to the state of Maine. So their annualized data is collected. It's reported from November 1st through October 31st for a fiscal year and that report is given to the state legislature on an annual basis. So to prepare the data for the city council, I took the 2024 report, that's the last year that the full report was available, and I gave you the snapshot in here. Yeah, ten certified providers, 21 sites in 10 counties. Main access points has multiple locations and they are the provider here. It accounts that statewide, there was just under 3.2 million new syringes distributed, just under 2.4 million collected. So there's 700,000 needles that are known to have been distributed that weren't collected. They're out there somewhere and we can give specific case studies of needles and the sheer volumes that were collected. So for example, 30 North Ave that's been in the news, city's got that under redevelopment and such under that. There was, yeah, there was in excess of 40,000 needles collected there. On the interior alone, trauma service, no, excuse me, Clean Harbors collected two 55-gallon drums from the single location. So when we talked to CDC about that, things started to really come to light. All right, then you have the number of referrals, HIV tests, HCV tests, the naloxone distribution, fentanyl test kits and other elements that were distributed. It recognized in the summary that the one-to-one plus exchange strategy, that was where the sheer volume of those needles came in. Excuse me. Excuse me, I'll recover. All right, so in that 2024 report, I have the Sanford specific numbers in here. I won't go through all of those at the moment, but I note that for that year, when they're operating under the one-to-one plus, they documented distributing 269,000 needles here in Sanford and collected 258,000. So there's a small differential there, 11,000 needles, but we know there's a sheer volume that's been built up over the years. It's still latent supply that's in our community. So I'm not going to go through all of these numbers specifically here, but you can see the other referrals and elements that they put in here. And these are the elements that will be retained under the pilot program. Knowing that they just completed the next year, but the state report is not available, I asked main access points to provide me that year's worth of data and they absolutely agreed to that. I got it late Friday, so I brought that in today for you to have and be able to access. I would note that it was last November that the city went to a one-to-one distribution with main access points. You can look that they distributed more needles, 346,000, and they collected 372,000. So they collected some of that latent supply that was out there because I know they put out five-gallon orange Lowe's buckets, they put out five-gallon, that I saw people carrying around with needles in to bring back for exchange. So I thought the interesting point was doing this year-over-year changes. That's what I wanted to bring to the council tonight because I told main access points, I wanted the data so that the council could view the year-over-year changes from the one-to-one plus to the one-to-one exchange and make an informed decision as to whether this is the correct role to go down, especially in light that you're going to be doing a pilot. So the total enrolled individuals increased by 138 or 22%. The new enrollments decreased slightly, went down by 5%. I see that as being positive. The new enrollments went down. All right, testing and health monitoring, they increased the HIV test. I believe that's because there was an outbreak up in Bangor, so there was a more concerted effort in looking at that. HCV rapid test increased from 5 to 23. Syringes distributed, they distributed 77,000 more, so 29% increase in syringes distributed. They collected 114,000 more, or 44%. Total exchanges rose from 955 to 1,205 exchange cases, so it went up by 26%. All right. Looking at the overdose prevention and referrals, naloxone went down by 3%. Total referrals dropped from 2,507 to 1,859, so there's a 26% decrease in total referrals. And then you can look at the change in the numbers here in the cases that are in there. So that would give you some indication as to where the pilot program would be as far as continued referrals, medical supplies that would be, that would go out there and such under that. The significant piece would be the syringes distributed and disposed would go away under the program. We know there's a latent supply of needles that have been inappropriately discarded out there, but there won't be 350,000-plus needles put out there by the program that may or may not be collected because there's been various levels of ability to claw those needles back. So that's the most comprehensive view that I can give you as far as the MOU, the pilot program, what's changed year-over-year when we went from the one-to-one plus to the one-to-one exchange. I was very surprised to see the increased number of needles distributed under the one-to-one, but I can't comment on that further other than the data that was submitted to the state in the prior year as part of the legislative report and main access point provided me the latest information as well. Thank you.
Do we have questions? Yes, Councilor Martel.
So thank you for bringing up the other paraphernalia. I would like to see that included in the needles being removed from being given out because I know that at least at some point, they were giving out like crack pipes and other different things that were drug paraphernalia and I would like to see that also cease. So whatever would need to happen to amend that.
Other questions? I just had a quick question. This, because they're not going to be running a syringe program in the community, that also prevents them from starting up a mobile unit, which is something that the state legislature has allowed for, especially in rural areas.
Under the pilot agreement, they will run a mobile van in lieu of their bricks and mortar location.
But not giving out syringes.
Not giving out syringes, correct.
Okay, all right. How would you word an adjustment if we were to add that as an amendment? How would you word an adjustment to Section 1A?
Can we get back there first? Could we just add in distribution of syringes or other drug-taking?
This has to be approved by main access.
I mean, I don't know how you'd want to word that, but something along those lines. My concern is that Section C, where it says essential supplies, they might interpret those sorts of things as under there and I'd like to make sure we're clear about that.
I would recommend, it says without limitation, the distribution of syringes, comma, I would put paraphernalia, comma, and then leave the rest of it. Collections of syringes and other biowaste provisions. So paraphernalia is legally defined, so I don't have to put anything else in there other than that.
Okay, so can I make a motion to amend?
What was presented?
To add in paraphernalia?
Do I have a second to that?
I'll second.
Councilor Hitchcock? Any comments or questions on that addition? All those in favor? Okay, so now that's part of the new document. Is there a motion to approve the document with that amendment as written? Yes, Councilor Hitchcock?
I'll move to approve the memorandum of understanding with main access points as amended.
Thank you. Second, Councilor Martel?
And I'll second that. Can I add a comment?
Yes, you may.
So while this doesn't go quite as far as I'd like to see it, I think it's a good step in the right direction and it does get rid of the syringes and additional paraphernalia while keeping some level of them directing people to services intact. So hopefully that will positively impact the people that they're currently serving and minimize the additional needles that we've been seeing. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? All those in favor? Thank you. That is it for this evening on the agenda. Councilmember comments? Councilor Martel, Councilor Hitchcock, are we all done for the evening?
It's getting colder out there. Snow is coming eventually, so fire up your shovels and make sure your snow blowers are working. You know, as we mentioned earlier, you know, the parking bans and things are coming up, so please make sure you know where you can and can't park.
Sign up for those notifications.
Sign up for notifications.
Councilor Hitchcock?
Just want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and that's happening. Just a reminder, I'm sure our fire department would like this plugged to make sure that you are safe in how you prepare your Thanksgiving. If you need any tips on what not to do, I'm sure there are plenty of YouTube clips out there. Frozen turkeys in deep fryers, things of that nature. So the idea, yeah, just be safe, have a safe and enjoyable, yes, Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Councilor Hanselman? I would like to congratulate Councilor Hanselman on running a marathon, which I think is incredible. She just finished the women's marathon in Scottsdale, Arizona. I was able to follow, when I found her, I'd keep checking where she was and I'm amazed.
Watching me slow down every mile.
All I knew is your daughter was ahead of you. And I'm like, wow, that makes sense, she's younger, et cetera. But she did, I thought she did very well for your first marathon. Congratulations. And I'll just use the time to plug Thursday night's meeting. I want to see a good crowd here. I don't want to see just staff and this construction will impact a large portion of our community. Anything else from anybody? Do you have an agenda item?
I do. Having, oh, sorry.
Go ahead. I'm going to pass it on to Becky, just so you know.
I think it might behoove us to review the sidewalk plowing overlay and the current sidewalks are being plowed to ensure equity with our neighborhoods and make sure we don't have any, I think that we might have our Lafayette School neighborhoods still being sidewalk-plowed because of it having been a school, whereas we don't have many other kind of tertiary areas. And there might be other, like I was noticing some like stubbed-out roads where it's, I don't understand why it would be snowplowed on the sidewalks like halfway down the street, off of Main Street. And there might be a reason, but I'm just wondering if we should take a look at it. There may be some savings and adjustments we could make.
Okay. Yes?
Could I just add to the earlier comment about the Thanksgiving Day safety because twice in my household, we've had the flaming marshmallows on the sweet potatoes casserole.
We don't see that.
Twice.
Would you like the recipe that you pour brandy on the sweet potatoes?
No, it would really flame then, so you know.
Oh, no, no, you're supposed to let it flame. What are you talking about? Okay, anything else? Any other agenda items?